Apologies, everybody. I think we got it wired now. Be great if somebody can give me a thumbs up out there so I can see if you can hear me.
I'd like to open this special meeting of the Paradise Recreation and Park District Board of Directors for June 27, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to offer up public comment for anything that is not on this agenda. Oh, wait. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Director McGreehan? We have Director Belfay on phone. Director Belfay, can you hear me? I mean, she's on there, right? She's muted, I think. Was that her? Okay, I got you. Secretary Seabodwick? Vice Chairperson Jen Goodland?
Here.
And Chairperson Robert Anderson?
Here. Like to welcome guests here and online. At this time, we will go for a public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Anyone online?
We have ten attendees online. I see no hands raised.
Then that will bring us to item 3.2, Workplace Violence Prevention Plan.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. And we shifted this because we have a board member that has to leave early. This is a mandatory requirement from the state of California. Item 3.2 Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. So that has to be in place by July 1, 2024. Kristi Sweeney has put together a report and has information on that plan. This is something that's going to be continuously updated. In fact, the law specifies that the plan should be based on Cal OSHA guidance, but those haven't been issued yet. But we have an obligation to have that plan in place. So we recommend passage. Happy to answer any questions.
Which standard committee did you run this through? Of the board? If any?
Yeah, I think we ran it through Personnel. We had a brief discussion on it.
A month back?
What's that?
Was it quite a few months ago?
Two months, maybe?
That sounds about right. Two or three months?
Okay, thank you.
And the Personnel Committee had no issues?
It's been uh, no, it's been more cleaned up, I would say, since that time.
Yeah, there were some comments on it, and this is something that's going to be continuously approved. We just passed not too long ago our our Injury and Illness Prevention Plan. And there's a lot of elements that we already had in there, so it was really taking what we had on the books and transforming it into a separate required by new state law plan. So it was taking some of those elements and folding into it. So you know, I think because this is something that's going to be updated, especially when Cal OSHA rules come out, it's going to likely be updated and revised then. And so it's something we're probably going to look at the next year anyway. So.
A quick question. At page five, it makes reference to possible security cameras. Are we looking into that? Or if not, do we have any already?
Do we have any public comment?
Seeing none.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, let the District Board approve the District Workplace Violence Prevention Plan as presented.
All second.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Director Al McGreehan?
Hi.
Director Mary Belfay? She might, she might text me on this one. She said her internet's cutting in and out, so she's also on via telephone. And so she's kind of texting me as well. I'll give her a minute to put her vote in. She says aye, if anyone wants to know. Sorry, Secretary Seabodwick? Vice Chairperson Jen Goodland?
Aye.
And Chairperson Robert Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries with five ayes.
Jen, are you staying for a little bit of the?
Yes, I'll be here for a few more minutes. There is a document I gave to Dan in regard to the next agenda item, just so we all, so we have all the pieces of the puzzle.
That brings us to item 3.1, the Yellowstone Kelly Trail Bike Skills Features and Amenities.
Yeah, thank you. This, we have a draft document in the packet here. I am going to promote Maddie to panel so she can present from her computer, but we had good public outreach on this. This is a grant, just to bring back some recollection, a grant from the county that provided us with funds to look at exploration of different trail amenities along Yellowstone Kelly Trail in addition to the bike path that's there. So looking at kind of not only bike features, but we had comments that came up, for example, from Horsemen's Association on having some desensitization and skill building out there, for example, a gate, you know, so kind of a gate that they can walk around and and practice from horseback getting through. And there were some other suggestions on that, too. There are other items such as drinking fountains, parking in certain locations and stuff like that came up. But you know, what I wanted to do is kick it over to Maddie to kind of present the report that American Ramp Company had provided with input from the public and just kind of walk through the scope. So Maddie, I'm going to ask you to unmute. And it looks like we can see the, your screen.
Okay, excellent. Well, as Dan mentioned, my name is Maddie and I'm with American Ramp Company. So yeah, you know, about a year, year and a half ago, maybe, we began working with the district to look at the Yellowstone Kelly Trail and identify a few bike zones that, you know, might make the trail a little more attractive to bike riders and kind of get them engaged to use the entire length of the trail. I, I won't read this word for word, but if anyone has any questions throughout this, feel free to stop me, but this is the final report that was prepared for the district. If you guys have a hard copy in front of you, this one has been updated a bit, so I'll call out any updates. And then Dan also has these documents as well. I sent them over before the meeting. But essentially, yeah, last year, our team started working with the district and the community to identify bike zones along the trail. Our lead bike park designer, Megan Bradley, was in paradise at the beginning of the project. She is a collegiate mountain biker and she is our lead bike park designer. So she came out there, actually brought her bike and rode the trail and put together not only the preliminary kind of bubble diagram of the trail, but she has been the lead designer and leading community engagement for this park from last year. So Megan, hopefully will be joining a little bit later, but these are all of her design. So just kind of how we've laid out the report, these first couple of pages outline the official scope of work that ARC was contracted to do for the district. And then the rest of the report is broken down by these scopes of work. So for example, the first section was to perform community engagement. So in the blue text is kind of our response to how ARC fulfilled all of these requirements. So here's just a list of dates that we put together, kind of highlighting what we've been doing for the last year plus, starting from project kickoff to today's meeting presenting to the board. And then I've also added in here kind of what Dan was highlighting, you know, within this community engagement.
Excuse me a second. Can you reshare your screen? We lost it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So yeah, here's all those dates I was mentioning. And then there is a write-up just identifying that, yeah, during some of that engagement, we did receive requests from some of the equestrian groups. You know, we had some good feedback on, just wanting to make sure there was room to share the trail and how that engagement might look. And I know from our team's perspective, we're big on, hey, we all just have to share the trails and we've tried to design these bike features in a way you know, where bikers can get off of the trail to use maybe, you know, the jump line and some more intense features, but with the opportunity to get back on the trail after that. And I do believe this trail is already shared between those groups, so there shouldn't be much disturbance. But ARC did not design any specific equestrian style features. I think this is more just a guide of, hey, here's where the bike trails are going to go. And then equestrian, you know, features can be incorporated or built upon on this final design. So I've also outlined, you know, within this community engagement, there are packets included that show what engagement we received from our online surveys. So to kick off the project, we actually hosted the survey on our website and you guys were able to direct community members to fill out the information. So this packet just gives an overview of all the questions that were asked and what the responses were. And we can go through all this, or if you guys had specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I do have a specific question, Maddie. On zip codes, I noticed there was, you listed the top four, but were there any from the Upper Ridge? I think it's a 5495954 zip code.
We can check. I do have an Excel sheet of all the raw data. So it's not a pretty presentation, but I can forward that information to Dan if you guys want to dig into it a little bit more.
Yeah, that'd be great, Maddie.
Maddie, this is Al McGreehan, another board member. In the listing of our community engagement activities, maybe I missed one of those, but I don't see any documentation of your, your efforts to interact with town of Paradise staff, particularly the town engineering and the planning director. I mean, they all have a feeling with the with the Yellowstone Kelly trail and bike path. And did you interact with them as part of this, this contracted offer?
Yeah, I can address part of that as, actually, all the base maps came from them. And some of the initial information that we got from them regarding some of it. We did have opportunity to interact with them early on, even before Maddie and her team came on board. And there was opportunity for them to comment on it. And we do have some town of Paradise staff members online for this meeting.
Okay, good, because I'm curious to know how they interacted on this process. Probably should fall by the wayside with this effort, but it turns out.
Yeah, and Maddie, maybe you can address this, but I think, I think some of the comments, information were tied in with some of the wetland areas and so forth. I think really what they're looking for, because they've been swamped with a lot of things, is a product to review. But we did have some, some comments at the beginning there. Maddie, you want to address that?
Yeah, there was some engagement with the town, like Dan mentioned, getting some base maps. And I do believe they were involved in one of the preliminary meetings where we went through some early level designs. As far as specific engagement with the town, we did host online surveys and had, you know, some Zoom meetings, so ARC provided links for all of that. And it would have been, you know, the district who sent those to the appropriate members, whether posting online or forwarding that information directly. But as Dan said, they were engaged, they've had input and, you know, certainly look forward to hearing what their input is on the final design.
When you're saying these questions up is that I, I have a recollection that bikeway plan for the, for this trailway included plans for equestrian use. And I see no work effort in the product that you're presenting to us, where that's being acknowledged. So I'm wondering, did the town staff interact with you on that subject?
On the old plan?
Yeah, because we have a very active equestrian citizenry.
Oh, sure.
And I think their expectation is still that they want to use parts of the old trailway for equestrian use.
Yeah, and perhaps we go through this a little bit further. I was going to add, Collette had just said, I can add that town is generally very supportive of this idea. And this is not our area expertise. We did ask for a plan or study to review, which is the phase we're in now. Town staff is happy to have further discussions and more specifics as to the draft plan.
So that's yet to come.
Yeah, but we did have some initial information. I'll give you a couple of bits of information that, you know, were influential on it. Certainly concerned about any wetland impacts. One comment that I think guided us, we knew about it from the start, but anything that was sort of off bike trail needed to merge back onto the main trail when you got to an intersection. So there wasn't kind of someone popping up out of the way and kind of, you know, funnel it back down to make a logical crossing there. And there'll be some other things that'll come up, but it just kind of gives a starting point. Is this, is this plan really?
Thank you.
Oh, and just one other thing to add was, yeah, we had actually good participation in our outreach from equestrian members of the public, and that's where some of the comments came. The focus of this grant and the money was really towards bike features, but we wanted to capture some of that. So that's, you'll see some light mention of it, but that is an important, I think, feature going forward. Okay, Maddie.
Wonderful, thank you. So yeah, all this information has been provided to you all, but just want to highlight kind of what these attachments are. So you know, nineteen pages here, just kind of outlining what's important to the users, what type of features they wanted to see along the trails, what kind of skills features did they want to see, and then just a few notable comments from those who took the survey. And again, I will send over that raw data. I also wanted to share, here's an example of the flyer that American Ramp Company put together for one of the community engagement meetings online. And then we'll just keep moving through. So another piece of this project was doing a site review and, you know, some initial surveying of the site. And like I mentioned, that bubble diagram. So on April 17 of last year, as I mentioned, Megan Bradley was out in paradise and did a tour of the site, took multiple photos and wrote a report just based on her thoughts for this trail and kind of the, the plan forward and that we followed during the design. So you can see attached is her site analysis report, the different zones, you know, environmental considerations, everything that she was keeping in mind during the design. Again, just breaking down kind of what are those targeted areas, targeted zones for the users, tabletop jumps, and then the zone types. So as we work through the design, you know, you will see skill and flow trails. What are those? What does that mean? What is a jump line? What does that mean? And then here is her first draft, kind of outlining that bubble diagram. And this was really kind of how we started the project, engaging with the community with some sample ideas and then really letting the community lead us. You know, they told us what they liked about these samples, what they didn't like, and then we were able to develop the custom design based on that feedback. Okay, and then just moving through these questions, you know, review locations, again, that's in the preliminary report. The desired features and maps, like Dan said, the drinking fountains, trash receptacles. All of that is outlined on the final plan. Here are all of the zones we've identified and those additional amenities that we recommend along the trail. Again, that final report shows the kind of top view drawings and renderings, as well as photos of trail features, long-term maintenance plan, cost estimate, schedules, and recommendations. So I wrote a little blurb here, kind of just giving you guys an idea of what it takes to maintain a park like this. So as you'll see in the final design, we have provided quotes for two surface options for the trail work. One would be a natural surface material such as dirt, and one option would be an asphalt surfacing material. So really, the long-term maintenance plan is going to depend on which surface the district decides to move forward with. But as a general rule of thumb, for a natural surface bike park or trail, you can expect 10% of the construction cost will be your annual maintenance fee. So for example, a $200,000 natural surface bike park would require roughly $20,000 a year of maintenance to keep that facility in pristine condition. Now, a lot of this is going to depend on your weather patterns, the trail usage. As mentioned, if there's going to be equestrian usage, you know, maintenance might need to be more frequent, but it might not be, might not need to be as frequent. So things like rainy weather seasons for a natural surface trail, you will need to close those dirt surfaces during the rain and until the surface is dried out. However, with a hard surface, you have some more flexibility and typically can leave those zones open during the rainy weather. So our recommendation would be if the district does not have the maintenance capabilities or does not have a dedicated bike crew or group of volunteers engaged and willing to maintain this trail, we would recommend a hard surface option. However, if you guys do have a great team involved or have the maintenance staff, a natural surface would be appropriate. And then we have attached kind of our standard maintenance plan, very generic. It can be updated to be more detailed, but that will all be based on which surface material the district wants to move forward with. And that maintenance plan is found here. So it goes through all of the bike park options, if there's jump zones, how to maintain the jumps, how to deal with landscaping and weeding, all the fun details. And Dan, I'll just pause here in case you've got any follow-up questions.
Maddie, you're presenting us a maintenance plan for Billy Park. Do you realize that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You are providing us a maintenance plan for Billy Park? And it's not part of today's subject. How did that get incorporated in the presentation?
Sorry, it was kind of fuzzy. Dan, do you mind repeating the question? It was just a little fuzzy on my speaker.
Posted up on the screen.
So there was a comment about the maintenance plan referring to Billy Park, but I don't, Mr. McGreehan, if you could tell me where you see the Billy Park?
I'm reading a hard copy of this report. I want just a moment to get the sheets. Put the screen up, not this page, the third page, right at the top of the page, so Billy Park Maintenance Plan. So I'm just
Yeah. Maddie, I think it's just a question. If we go to the cover of the maintenance plan for just a second, maybe we could
Okay, yep, sorry.
Yeah, I think back one more to the cover page.
That's what I'm talking. Why is that in there? There it is, see? That's my point.
I see Billy Park, or Mike Park. It doesn't say Billy Park.
Go back one more page. Go forward one more page. I thought it said Billy.
So if you could advance to the page. I think it's, it's an eye test in the room here. Bike Park was interpreted as Billy Park, so I think we're back on a track.
Understand. I do have a question. And maybe even, Al, you might have the answer to this. Railroad right-ofways historically are right-ofways for buried utilities, abandoned utilities as well. Have we done consultation with the town regarding any potential buried utilities or pipelines along this route?
No, you know, because this is at a level of kind of conceptual plan level. So I think there's, there's probably been some light work on that and certainly trying to look, avoid any sort of barriers on there. I think because a lot of this, and Maddie could probably address this, a lot of this is not trenching in necessarily, it's kind of adding to and some minor dirt repairs. So anything like that would absolutely, we know that in this community, we have to do a USA on any of those sites, we're going to start moving dirt or poking holes. So that's just going to be part of it, but it wasn't done at this stage.
Yeah, that's correct, Dan. And this next section kind of outlines data gaps and information needed for construction. So that is outlined in here. We would need detailed, you know, utility plans, any setbacks or right-of-way requirements, geotech reports, which typically is not provided at a high-level concept phase. So either a more detailed design would get into those elements or prior to construction for approval and sign-offs, we would need to verify with that type of information.
Maddie, maybe you can show us some of the overview of the locations, because we talked about different nodes essentially, or different little play features that'd be centered along the way. And I don't know if you want to do that later, or if this is a good moment to kind of walk through the the big overview on what the features are and maybe getting people accustomed to what it, what it looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will just show you quickly. Sorry, I got to move my screen around here. So I just want to highlight that ARC did perform three revisions to this project. So there was definitely a lot of engagement with the district and with the community. So I just want to show kind of how this design has involved. We do not have to get into the weeds. I will just flip through just to kind of give you a flavor, again, of what we've been working on over the last year, year and a half. So this was the first revision that was presented to the district, had some great feedback, and then was able to update with a little more detailed kind of zoom-ins on where we're, you know, recommending these phases, adding a little more detail to the features themselves. Just trying to, to give you guys more information so you can really visualize what this park will look like. And again, we did three of these revisions based on comments from the district and the community. You know, flow trails, which is what you're seeing here, was a big feature. So kind of trying to incorporate the, the trees and just give riders a unique experience along this trailway. You know, doing some skills features along the ways, rollers, just trying to engage all of the different bike elements that one might encounter in the mountains. And so all of that led us to our final design, which I will zoom in here and we can kind of look through the different zones. The design is, we're going to go through each section. It's running from north to south, but the zones, Zone 1 is on the south end. And as it continues, you could see here, you know, seating areas we're recommending at the start of the trails, repair stations, water fountains. It is my understanding that there might not be water utilities to this area, so that would need to be something the district considers if that is a feature that if that is a feature that, you know, is highly requested. One other thing our team was trying to be considerate of was the basalt rock that is available in Paradise and perhaps already at the trail. So you'll see in these callouts, again, this is zone six, so on that north end of the trail system, we have the flow zone, incorporating those rock features where we can. This trail would cross over, and then there are a few roller features, some skills features, and then a nice berm and some more basalt rock to get you back on the trail. And then as you continue south along the trail, you would encounter another pretty simple skills course, great for advanced riders, but also great for young, young kids, kids on strider bikes. You'll notice each feature is kind of positioned to one side of the trail. So we always want to give an option. If somebody needs to do a ride around or doesn't feel comfortable riding the feature, they can just ride next to it. These are all optional. So when the trail would be constructed, there would be room to pass by the feature if you did not want to ride it. And then as we keep moving south along the trail, you can see here, just kind of a more detailed version of what we looked at earlier, some nice berm features, skills features along this section, optional kind of rock feature that you can ride, and then rollers, more rock gardens to get you back onto the trail. And then section three, very similar. This, we wanted to create more of a circuit feature. So you can essentially ride this kind of northwest side of the trail, hit these optional features, and then you could loop back onto the southeast portion and back and forth. So this would be a fun, you know, just circuit, you could just ride this round and round a few times. And then we get into kind of section one and section two, which I would say are the main event perhaps of this trail. So during our community engagement online that we did in March, one of the big things we heard was, there needs to be a zone along this trail that brings people to the trail and gets them excited to actually ride down the trail, like a trailhead feature, just something exciting that's going to make users advance along the trail system. And they said that they really wanted a jump line feature and a robust skills course. So you can see section two has this jump line on the northwest side of the trail, which again, you can just circuit as many times as you want, and then has this nice linear skill, skills course. You know, if you have a friend who wants to hit the jump line and one who just wants to work on skills features, you have everything you need kind of in the second zone. It's also strategically located next to the ball fields, trying to put it in an area where there's going to be a lot of activity and give users, you know, maybe families at the ballpark, their kiddo can just hop over to this bike skills area and have some fun there. And then we'll finish off with section one. So this is at the south end of the trail. And this is just a really fun skills course.
Maddie, I think there's a question in the room here.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is where the equestrian park is. No, she said that's the ballpark. Is that the high school? Okay, sounded like you said more, the ballpark at Moore Park.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, Maddie, that section that you're talking about is near the high school, right?
That is correct.
That makes a lot more sense, because if we are going to have equestrian features, we're going to want them near Moore Road Ballpark, where, where the equestrian.
Yep, that is correct. So yeah, this is the high school. So again, strategically, you know, in an area where people who are going to be excited to use maybe a jump line feature, kids getting out of school, being able to ride the trail. And then, yeah, the final zone here is at the south end of that trail. Again, just a really fun skills course. We thought this location would be great to have these features because, you know, there's probably a lot of families and kids maybe using this area. There's parking to the south of this. So for a kid on a strider bike, they might not be able to, to bike a mile up the trail to engage with some of these features. So we wanted to make sure there was a full experience for either new riders or young riders, where they could start learning these important, you know, skill development, but still be close to some main activity and some parking areas. And then at the end of this report is all of our cost estimates. For each of these zones, we've provided estimates for that asphalt trail surfacing, the bike features themselves, and then as well as a dirt trail option. And then we have broken these out into phases. So ARC recommends the phasing approach kind of follows the zone approach. So phase one would be, you know, zones one and two, again, wanting to engage the most user groups during the first phase. So that would be families and kids kind of at the south side of the park. And then again, that main event that we heard from the community, this seemed to be a high priority feature they were looking for with the jump line and that robust skill zone. So our recommendation is those would be addressed during the first phase, and then zones three and four would be considered for phase two, and then zone five and six for phase three. So all of these zones, as you're progressing along the trail, we didn't want to suggest you, you phase it in a way where the, the, this trail feels incomplete. So if you guys were only able to get up to phase two, you would have an incredible trail, and, you know, phase three would be the cherry on top. But this is outlined in a way that it makes sense on its own, but becomes an incredible experience as you complete each additional phase.
Maddie, this is Dan, just to clarify that section that you're talking about right now, that's, that's not in the draft, right? That's, you've added that since, since we got the draft?
That is correct. Yep. So we, we broke these out in a little more detail, giving you that breakout of what the bike features themselves cost versus the trail work. And then we also added these phase suggestions. So that is in the updated draft that I'm sharing on my screen, but not the hard copy.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have that posted and available. You know, one, one thing I was going to ask you is, you know, folks have brought this up as like, okay, is this, is, I'll get this out of the way, we don't have funding for the implementation, but what we're looking at is potentially either doing pieces of it over time, or seeking grants for, for big chunks of it. So, you know, I think one thing that I had shared with you guys, that concept of, I think, pretty easily with working with the town and volunteers and just sort of what resources you might have available, would be a flow course next to the existing trail, and then working on the features later on. Do you have a sense, you know, I think that phasing will help when I get a chance to look at it. But do you have any suggestions on, you know, the, the elements, or is that a reasonable approach that I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think if you have some experienced volunteers who, you know, have done trail work, we regularly work with groups like that, maybe nonprofits, who will just acquire the features from our team, and we can either send a crew out to help assemble the features, or like I said, if you have an experienced builder, you know, sometimes they're able to assemble our features. So it just depends on how turnkey you want the project, but we've done it every way you can imagine.
Thank you.
Great. And then just kind of working through the, the last half of the report. So the cost estimate section, kind of just as everything we went over, the final design concepts broken out by, you know, material type, trail surfacing phases. We've explained our phase approach and why we suggested the way we did, potential funding opportunities. So American Ramp Company has provided funding sources that we are familiar with and we have worked with in the past. And then again, the, the quantities, the materials, that's all provided in the final design concept. There's lists of all of the features we're proposing, as well as the turnkey price for those features. And then the final summary report, this is the document we're reviewing, large posters of the final design. Once we get the final stamp of approval from you, Dan, we will print those trail sections and ship them to the district. And again, those quantities and cost estimates can all be found in that final design that we just walked through.
Maddie, just a question, you know, one of the things we had talked about that I had harped on quite a bit was a concept that we, we have a lot of the, the column near basalt, some of it is, especially this stuff that's really, has a flat surface to it, seems like it could lend itself well to, you know, like that A-frame that you have up on the screen, you could do something similar with that if the rocks were arranged, you know, in such a way, but it would be more rugged, there could be some gaps. Any thoughts there on how to, I mean, would, would you want to cap that if you had it available? I know wood and steel are often used in locations because that's what's easy to get out, and you could have some control over the surfaces. In some cases, we have, you know, a vast pile of rocks that, that could be utilized for some interesting features and, and easy access from an equipment standpoint to set them up if we needed to gravel them in or compact them in, or, you know, what are your thoughts on kind of incorporating those features into the skills building sections?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think something our crew is great at is, again, this is just a high-level concept, right? So the final trail that either our team or your crew builds will not be exactly like this design. So part of the beauty of bike parks and trail work is finding those unique elements that you can incorporate into the park. And our team even does this with skate parks, you know, if they're excavating and find a boulder onsite, they will turn it into a skate feature. So some of those items, you know, we just give our team a heads up that, hey, there's a lot of this material onsite, and our builders are experts at this, right? Like this is their craft, this is their art. So we give them that flexibility to make those changes in the field and kind of let those elements that they're finding, you know, kind of speak to them on how they should be used. But I would say, yeah, a lot of these prefabricated features, you know, they're designed in a way that they can be anchored into the ground, and like you said, Dan, moved easily. So, you know, a rock feature, you could definitely make some skills courses out of those rock features. It would be hard to incorporate into our framework, you know, just because this is all steel, the wood is bolted into the steel structures. But it would be our preference to use materials we find onsite to create interesting and unique skills features.
Great. I think it'd make a very unique kind of setting for us, too.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Now, I was just going to add this, and the, and the Q and A, one of our participants brought up, not a question, but input, input, natural surfaces are preferable for equestrians. And then I asked the question, thank you, any thoughts on more technical or rock garden sections? They can be avoided if necessary. And the response back was, yes, rock garden features, if large to maneuver through, would be nice. And to add, the ballpark area is also the area with a horse arena. Thank you.
I have a question submitted by Mary. She asks, is there a warranty difference if volunteers put features together versus American Ramp Company assembling them?
Yes, that is a great question. We would recommend, at the very least, having, we call it a supervised install, where we can send a construction manager to oversee your crews installing the product, ensuring that it is installed correctly. There have been instances where we just require photos of the completed installation to confirm everything was done correctly. But for a project like this, I would recommend probably just hiring an ARC supervisor if you wanted to do more of a DIY install, just hiring one of our supervisors to come out, oversee everything, answer any questions. And if, if you were to proceed with that approach, the warranty would still be intact.
I know, one of the concerns, I appreciate the numbers, we'll have to look at it, but is, is that maintenance component? Because, you know, we've seen lots of features come and go in different places where there might be some initial local enthusiasm and volunteers, and then they disappear, or the agency isn't able to handle it. And we just want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's maintenance is low or sufficient enough for either our crews to handle or volunteers on an organized basis, but it also has to fit in within any sort of specs, you know, that, that are constraints the town may have on it. So I think there's kind of a, any of these features have to be sanctioned out there. But any thoughts on that maintenance and, and the best way of kind of having a robust program that can handle it if, if we don't have kind of dedicated funding for it?
Yeah, I think, you know, the hard surface option is going to be the, the most maintenance-free approach. And I think just maybe, you know, having strategic signage and a dedicated either website or, you know, text line or, or phone line, that people can self-report. So, you know, the district isn't having to maintain every zone, but they can be alerted if there's, you know, a critical element that needs to be addressed. So yeah, first approach, I would say hard surface will cut down on maintenance. These features are fairly maintenance-free, and that's how we've designed them. Like I said, steel framework, the cedar planks. The nice thing about these skills features is if a plank does break or something happens to it, you can order a replacement plank from ARC. And we've even had some customers who just go to their local, you know, lumberyard and have them cut the planks. So trying to set it up to where you're not having to replace the whole feature, but perhaps just a border to as needed.
Well, I saw that, this is Robert Anderson. The, in the poll, people preferred the natural trail, but I also agree with the hard trail because you wouldn't be able to use a lot of the features many months out of the year because we're quite muddy. And, and, and that would cause so much more maintenance, aside from closing features off, but you're not really going to close features off. We're not going to have them completely fenced with barbed wire fence, because I'm, I'm sorry that most of the people want a natural surface, but the, the hard surface sounds like the only way to go where we are.
Yeah, and I will say the trend for municipal facilities such as this, we're seeing more and more municipalities move towards a hard surface option for all of those reasons. And like Dan mentioned, usually at the beginning of a project like this, you have a lot of volunteers on board, but life happens, right? Kids grow up, sporting events happen, people move away. So it can be hard to have that reliable group throughout the years. I know in Arkansas, we did a, a revision to a bike park that was dirt surface, and it was closed, you know, most of the year. Rarely were all the lines open in the bike park. So ARC went back and made it an asphalt facility, and now the park is open like 97% of the year, the park is open. So, I mean, yeah, unless you have a robust group maintaining it or making sure people aren't riding the trails in those muddy conditions, hard surface, while it might be a little more expensive upfront, you will save money, you know, in the long run.
I've got a question. Steve Rodewick, I'm looking at the engineer estimates, and I realize those are indeed just estimates. But I guess my question is, what is your, I guess, confidence level with regard to keeping within that number? Or maybe another question is, what is your track record for staying within an engineer's estimate during a project, particularly if it's over a period of years when it's put in in phases?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, great question. Well, the great thing is we are a design and build firm. So all of our estimates are being generated from actual prices from actual projects we're either working on now or have completed, you know, over the last year. So I'm extremely confident in these numbers that this is what it would cost. And we would be silly to charge you more when we're the one that quoted it. But it's great to account for inflation if we're talking, you know, this is going to be two to three years in the future. I would rather be safe than sorry, and I would recommend, you know, adding five to 10% to these costs, just so we're not caught off guard in a couple of years. Um, just so we're not caught off guard in a couple of years when it's time to build the project.
This is all, are you suggesting, uh, to account for inflation, you're, you're suggesting five to 10% increase in costs or what?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that initially, so.
I'm sorry, was there a question? I did, it was just a little muffled on my speaker.
Yeah, nothing on our side. Um, Mr. Chair, I don't see any comments, uh, outs, oh, let's see, there are. Oh, just some comments here, um, related to, here's from, um, a PHA Paradise Horsemen Association, robust group, very active. Just comment hard surfaces harsh on, uh, equine ligaments as well as slippage with shoes. Another comment was with our clay soil, our ground remains wet for quite a while. When equestrians be asked to not rise in the, ride in these conditions. We ride this trail mostly in winter wet months. We don't want the paved trail, trails, however. So just some, some comments for us to consider.
We're talking about bike features, right?
Yeah, but.
Are there questions? Can you be going on the bike pictures?
One of the comments that came up was having, uh, areas that they could use along the trail. So it was, this was focused on bike features, but we wanted to hear what other amenities were. So for example, we heard, uh, comments about, uh, one from folks, any users, drinking fountains, you know, access to water and stuff. So that, that could be any users. The questions, uh, were asked to participate in it and offer some items. Cause I think there are some opportunities if there were added features. Some of these areas are pretty wide, so it could have multiple features in there. So it was just part of the collection process of information.
Yeah. And Dan, I'll just piggyback. Um, so all of these features we designed, while they're steel framework, extremely sturdy. They are designed for bike users. Um, so there would need to be some details on, for instance, if a feature was damaged due to an equestrian use, um, that would void the warranty. Um, the warranty is only covering if the features are being used as intended by the intended user groups.
Isn't it, isn't the trail right now paved? All the way to the end of Paradise?
Yes, there is a paved bike path. But the, um, the trailway, if you want to call it trailway or the rideaway that is owned by the town, just the rideaway. It runs the width. I think it's anywhere from the minimum of, I want to say 80 feet to possibly as much as a hundred. I could be off on that.
Maybe a little bit more than that in places.
Yeah.
I, I, as I recall, I think one of the sections, it was like 160 feet wide.
Something like that, yeah. But not, not very much of that.
Right. Very irregular.
Yeah.
I, I think right now, I mean, if you look at right now, there's the, the paved uses. There are folks that will pop off on the mountain bike, questions are right along the, alongside. So I think there's already kind of multiple uses. This is just looking at adding to it.
What the bike, uh, bike path entails is, is the old railroad line itself, that, that was the rail, rail line. So that's what became the, the paved pathway, paved pathway. Bike path rather, and pathway, I should say. So it was summered sometimes and sometimes not depending upon the grade, everything else that the railroad had to deal with.
And, and if you do walk that path, you will see bike trails naturally occurring, not naturally occurring, but just occurring bike trails, uh, by the historically put there by the bikers of the vicinity of the area. And, um, it, we could, and I think it would be incumbent, it would be us to do it is make sure that, um, what is traditionally bike stays bike and what is traditionally horse stays horse. Uh, and I don't think that would be a hard hurdle to cross. Cause there, there are places where particularly around the horse arena, you see the horse pass or below. Uh, they're, they're on the horse arena side and they continue for quite a while. Uh, and on the, and you also see bike trails going in and out and up and down. And at least where I've seen traditionally on the western side. So, um, yeah, that's where we gets into the detail planning. Once either we get past this 30,000 foot overview and we, you know, discuss, you know, you know, by the yard of where the bikes should go, where the horses should go. So it's just something that we all need to be attentive of.
Yeah. And I, I think, uh, to, to Maddie's point and then the comments we have online is that making sure that, you know, the questions can, can pass through a feature or they can get, you know, directly cross it in a certain location. Um, and, and that if it's, uh, you know, certainly can do some damage on some of those features. If, if there's, um, you know, 1,200 pound animal on it, it's designed for, for bikes. So I, I think it's just, uh, there's some, um, foot by foot, inch by inch planning that would have to happen. I, I know this is unusual for us to have this kind of presentation and then more of a, a, open-ended meeting here. Uh, we did have an action, but I think given the, um, and we need to open up formally for a public comment, but we have, um, on our recommendations review and accept the plan with proposed modifications, I would suggest that we bring it back to the board at our, um, July meeting, um, with a chance to look at the, review the, uh, modified document. So that'd be my recommendation is to table it till you have a chance to look at it, post it in, uh, those comments up.
And I, and I think we would probably receive, uh, more public comment between here and now then, and that we can consider.
I'd still like to hear public comment at this point, if we have any. You, you have a, a maximum of three minutes. And do we have any public comment?
You know, I, as we've been going, I've been trying to keep up with, uh, with them, but we've had a series of questions online that I, I brought to you guys, um, out there, but I see no hands raised right now. Um, we'll open up that invitation. Are there, is there anyone on attending that would like to, um, speak on this topic? Seeing none, Mr. Chair.
Well, I can I pose a question just for the sake of the, um, I like you, I like what you've shared, Dan. I think this is, this is what I call a, a work in progress. It's a draft. It's, it needs more modifications. You've, you've been, you've given input to our consultant, that's Maddie and the crew for some more modifications to the conceptual plan and the report. Which I certainly endorse. I'd like to see that before I vote on this. And I think your recommendation to continue this to our regular meeting in July is sound. But I do ask this question. We're not required to do this, but should we notice this thing for public hearing? We might engage more public input if we do that. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Well, we did, we did, um, share that information, but we had a short notice, it was a special meeting. We didn't have it on the last one. Uh, or we had it on agenda. We didn't have that, the word out. We did get it out. We have, you know, um, at, at least 10 people logged on to, to listen to it. They, a fair amount of public engagement there. Uh, we could certainly have it posted online, put the word out that way for any additional comments. Uh, a hearing is, as you know, is, is more restricted to, you know, kind of direct action with this being a conceptual plan. I think it's, it's a little bit different. Not quite the same level as what I would say for public hearing, the, you know, kind of notification you might have for a planning document.
Okay, that's very good. So if we get to the point where we bring this back, say July 10th, and we take action on the conceptual plan, I'm going to assume it's, it's a final conceptual plan. Then at that point in time, if it's adopted.
Yeah, but it's non-binding. And I want to say, I think one, one thing that I want to make really clear that's important is this is a, a plan that we've embarked on and yet the, the, the principal partner here would be town of Paradise. And there'd be a lot of mechanisms in place on, um, maintenance and, and, uh, you know, their review and so forth. That could very well trigger that sort of, you know, sequel review, uh, uh, public hearing, that type of thing. But I think at this point, it's just sort of, is this something that's worth pursuing, a feasibility level?
Yeah. I guess, I guess my question is, when we get to the point where we brought this thing is, and I'm not privy to this. As indicated, she's worked primarily with some town staff members, but I hope the town staff has been apprising their counsel of this process. And where this is going and where it's about to be maybe a final conceptual plan. I honestly don't know if any of the council knows this.
Yeah, actually at our last liaison meeting, uh, this was brought up briefly. So there, there is awareness on it. And certainly, you know, we've just seen this, this today. Um, there would have to be a, a little more scrutiny of it. But I think with the town and the, the burdens they have, uh, getting a point of a plan becomes a lot easier for them to re, review and comment than an open-ended process on, you know, verbal thing. And we do have, uh, members of the town staff on, online.
And, and, and I think, I call that, I guess, is online, but we should make a formal outreach to the town, whether it's the public works director or, or council liaison to come and, uh, join us here at our next regularly scheduled meeting and take, you know, take on the subject.
One, one thing I will mention is that, um, I believe our, our, uh, agreement with American Ramp is the end of this month and as well as the contract. So that would be sort of, um, in, you know, eh, out of that scope. So if there's substantive changes, then, you know, we need to catch them before, before then. Maddie, I don't know if you want to address any, any comments on, along those lines? With the timeline proposed?
Yeah. Um, I think American Ramp Company, you know, we could obviously provide additional revisions. Um, I think at that point we would be looking at, uh, a change order, an updated scope, uh, letter. Um, as mentioned, American Ramp Company has provided, you know, four revisions to this design and, uh, the original document said, you know, two. So, uh, from our perspective, we want this to be a successful project and we want to see this happen. And we know there's a lot of exciting bike park, uh, opportunities taking place in Paradise and kind of in the area. So, uh, we want to remain partners with you all and make this perfect for the district and the town. Um, but additional detailed design work or detailed revisions, uh, we would probably be looking at amendment to the contract or a separate contract for, for those items.
Well, this is all agree. Myself and the owner, which we provided, um, copy of our district manager's communication due June 18th, I believe, which is possibly eight days ago. At this point, our district manager pointed out to you, things we're doing in this group are, that were still outstanding. Hopefully we've been working since, since you received this. And will that be completed by the end of this month?
I'm sorry, Dan, could you, I, I can't understand through my speakers. Um, I apologize.
Sure. Usually I'm the one that, that has difficulty anybody hearing. So it's nice to be the, the speaker for that. Um, the, uh, question was, I had sent you as scope of our original scope of work. Uh, with some comments on how to address it. And certainly you brought up some of those items today with the costing. But the question was, what's the status of progress on completing those items related to the original scope of work? And will that be completed, um, uh, by the deadline?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, Dan, and that might just be a more detailed meeting for me and you to hop on, just to go through line by line. But, um, when I was looking through this final report, I do believe we've responded to every section within that scope of work. Um, but Dan, like I said, happy to have a more detailed meeting offline, just to, to make sure we've fulfilled everything. And if there's anything else we can do to help, we'll definitely provide that.
That's good. Maybe we can, after the meeting today, Maddie, set it up and, and make sure we have all those addressed. Cause, uh, like we mentioned, this is a scope work that we're carrying forth from, um, Pink County. Right. The funding, we want to make sure it's, it's all responsive and they can, they can, uh, say yes to it. So, yeah, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
That's it for me.
Mary did text saying that she agrees that we should bring this back to the next meeting.
That's what I was just going to ask. Do we all concur?
I, I concur.
All right. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Uh, we appreciate your time and walking us through that.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. And, and like I said, if you guys have any questions, Dan has my email. So feel free to reach out and, uh, we're excited to see this project, uh, progress.
Thank you, Maddie.
Yeah.
To, uh, July 10th.
That brings us to board comment.
There's a comment based on this, this afternoon. He'll be satisfied that all those modifications are forthcoming by the end of the month and we can avoid a change order to the contract. I, I think that will happen even though you've only got a handful of days left for this month, but. And if that takes place, then like you said, you'll have that posted in plenty of time before our regular meeting. So that people can look at it if they want to online, right? Okay. I don't know, I haven't known a few persons since our last regular meeting is, um, I was very happy and pleased to attend or participate on, um, June 19th in, in, at Crown Park in Con Town with, with our city center. And I thought that was a, a good interaction and good input we received. Our staff we see relative to things that I see around the lake and at the park. So I really enjoyed that. It was good seeing you there, Robert, and your wife too as well. And, uh, last but not least, uh, Mary and I participated in a zoo with, um, the patch board regular meeting, which was this Monday. They've been meeting usually in the last Monday of the month, but things got changed recently, but we just had a, a, a board meeting. So that's all I have to report. Oh, and one last thing, um, Mary, if I bring this up too, but, um, all the board members have been sent an invitation that you're aware for a summit meeting on July 19th and 20th. I encourage you folks to go. I went last, last year. And it was very enlightening and it's, it's, it's legitimate for you to attend and participate. It's just a summit workshop. It's not a decision-making type process. And it's other board members from other entities that are part of patch and so forth. So if you can attend, please do.
They also, uh, invited board members to join the, their board. What organization was that, Dan?
I'm, I'm, oh.
That's not patch. That's.
Yeah, that's, uh, there was another organization that has a couple of board.
I'm mixing up the emails you sent.
Yeah. And I, I just put those out there just in case, you know, someone that might, um, be a good member to serve on another committee or not necessarily directed to, to board members, just, just an FYI.
What was that organization?
It's a church group.
Campfire.
A campfire collaborative.
Yeah.
Um, no comment. I'll, I'll, I'll dig up something for July.
How about Mary?
No, Mary has no comments.
Well, then let's adjourn this meeting until our next regular meeting on July 10th. It's six o'clock right here.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone online.